Welcome, everybody. This is our our fourth session in this Ruth study for Lent, and we're on chapter three tonight. So I hope everybody's been able to, if you haven't been joining us live, or if you've been live a little bit and and watching it later, I hope you've been able to to stay caught up on all that. We're going to be diving into chapter three. And just as a point of reviewing, we'll do a little bit of that first, just a minute or so, and then we'll dive right in. But I will open us, as always, with the word of prayer. "Gracious God, you crossed the border from heaven to earth to be with us in the flesh of Jesus Christ." We ask that as we lean into your word this day, that we would see in the lives of someone who crossed the border like Ruth, perseverance of people trying to live a good life in this world, and the space that we are called to make for those people. Help us to see your hand at work in the lives of these people and these ancient stories, so they might come alive for us. We ask that you would send your Holy Spirit on each of us today, so that we would learn and grow and do so from the point of each other in sharing. Amen. So last week, we were in chapter two, and some of our big takeaways were within that, that Ruth, like all people, is seeking to be seen, not just to survive what she's doing and working the fields for her in Naomi, but to be seen and therefore to be known. And we see in her, and we'll talk about that again tonight, kind of delaying on the line of her body as the site in which those things are taking place. And so we see in the gestures of people like Ruth, who is an enemy of the people of Israel, but, you know, in theory, and also an immigrant, how she, in her life, and perhaps in the lives of immigrants in our own time, they helped to bring to the surface and to challenge the people of God, that we should care for the stranger, protect the stranger, offer sustenance to the stranger. And also, we see in Boaz's benevolence and his chesed, his loving kindness toward Ruth, he extends blessing on her life. And it's not a blessing in the sense of, I have something that you need, but rather, Boaz, in his own kind of humility, is appearing to acknowledge God's favor on Ruth. He is acknowledging something that is already there, God's hand in the way that she lives her life. And so we see a Ruth who is seeking to belong to this people, and just really, it's a discovery of, okay, what's I gonna take? What's that like? But tonight, we're jumping into another place, a little bit further along in the story here. We ended kind of talking about how Naomi and Ruth are gonna, especially Naomi, are gonna become kind of scheming people together. And they're gonna be working out this plan of establishing a future for them, for themselves. And so it's really great. I think it's, this is the return of Naomi to her full-life kind of self. She renames herself Mara, which means bitterness, but we see the sweetness of Naomi, which is what her name means, returned tonight. So I'm gonna share my screen. And and so I'm calling chapter three and our exploration of it, the mystery of joining. And so you have this picture of Boaz and Ruth lying at his feet here. And this is interesting, interesting part of the story that we entered into this evening. I love, as always, I say, I love finding artwork, because there's so many different expressions and depictions of these scenes in the Bible. We're just lucky to be going through a book of the Bible, which people have thought are worthy of creating artwork for. So it's tough. So three, we always start out with three big questions. So here's three big questions for us to think about, not necessarily to answer, but just to think about and to guide our process tonight. So one is, is God party to our scheming? You know, is God cool with us kind of scheming and working our own way in the world, independent of Him? You know, how determinative is our agency? How much of us makes things happen alongside the will of God? Is it just the will of God? Is it us working with God? What happens when we're working against God? Is God okay with our scheming? And what place does our, do our efforts have in that? The next question is, what new reality is being spoken here? In the coming together of Boaz and Ruth, which we see as an Israelite being joined to a Gentile, what new reality is being spoken in the midst of a culture of people that's called to care for and yet fears the other? And then the final question, which is really one of the questions that just is woven throughout the whole book, is who is Ruth? Ruth the Moabite from Moab, is she her own person? Or is she someone whose identity can only be discerned in relation to the body of another, be it Malan, Naomi, Boaz, whoever? And that's, that is probably, that may be one of the most important questions of this entire book. Who is Ruth? And so just a couple of primary themes here in chapter three is Naomi's plan and Ruth's involvement is foremost about taking care of Ruth. We talked last week about how Naomi's kind of return and recognition that, oh, it's Boaz you were, whose fields you were gleaning. So that, that is, that in a sense is saying, oh, I have a way that I can show my love and repay that love that you've shown and care that you've shown for me. I know, you know, you're not looking for that, but this is a way that I can return some of what I've received from you is to offer this, the possibility of relationship with the relatives who can redeem our situation. And so it's not about restoring the reputation and legacy of their dead husbands. It's about taking care of Ruth. And so the scheme of joining Ruth and Boaz in a relationship and eventual matrimony carries great risk, and we're gonna talk about that, is it's extreme risk that, again, is taken on by Ruth, as it was in the previous chapter with her daring to enter into the fields. So, and again, like last week, the nature of touch comes into play. Strange manners of touch and sexual gesture innuendo scandalizes chapter for some readers. And it's critical, though, that we don't get hung up on those things, but rather to consider the danger for Ruth, what she does, as well as to avoid the pitfalls of purity language when it comes to things about sex. And we'll talk a little bit about that, because we don't talk, you know, I'm gonna be candid, we don't talk enough about sex in the church. We kind of, you know, put our hands over our mouth, and I think it's something that is beautiful and is something that we should, you know, it's not, I get, it's not like, it's not something you want to do in certain company, but certainly, it's something that God ordained as holy and good. And so, you know, we're not gonna get too much into that, but, you know, let's not make it a, something we're scared of, right? So Ruth is still held, we'll find, at some distance due to her Moabite heritage. And despite the radical nature of this story, the text, as we found, continues not to let us forget Ruth's origins and her ethnicity. And so why is that? So having said all that, I know that's a lot, but it's just, it'll, we'll circle back to all of it. So let's dive right in here. Somebody wants to read here, Ruth 3:1 through 5.
Okay, I'll read.
Thanks.
Naomi, her mother-in-law, said to her, Naomi, her mother-in-law said to her, "My daughter, I need to seek some security for you, so that it may be well with you. Now here is our kinsman, Boaz, with whose young women you have been working. See, he is winnowing barley tonight on the threshing floor. Now wash and anoint yourself, and put on your best clothes, and go down to the threshing floor. But do not make yourself known to the man until he has finished eating and drinking. When he lies down, observe the place where he lies. Then go and uncover his feet and lie down, and he will tell you what to do. She said to her, 'All that you tell me, I will do.'"
What is going on here?
I read it. I've done.
The plan, what, my man, what, what do you, what was speaking to you in this? Or bringing up those questions and wonderings that we always do?
It's a little racy, I'll be honest.
It is. It kind of has that feel, doesn't it?
The word seduction comes to mind.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna actually circle back to that for sure. Yeah, that's 100% there. It's like, get on your best clothes, on your perfume.
Yeah.
Go lay down.
And the earlier thing, go ahead, whoever was talking. Okay, and the earlier thing that you were talking about, that you were reading, Patrick, you said Naomi scheming. And that's what comes out to me is, what a scheme she has laid out. Oh, boy.
Yeah, and you wonder, like, I, because chapter two ends, and she stayed with her mother-in-law. So some, at least some small amount of time, maybe days, maybe weeks have passed. So she's had time to think this through, right? Yeah, she's, she's come up with a doozy.
You could think that, indeed, you know, her sons have died. And, and so there goes that security for Ruth. And so I'm still, you know, since my son has died, your husband has died, and I'm still help take care of you. And I've got a plan, you know, I've got a plan, you know, mother-in-laws, even though, you know, I got a plan for you. I know you had it, how, tell you how to do it, so.
But I mean, but isn't that so, like, cool? It's so sweet. Wow. Anything else? Apparently Boaz is planning on working late tonight, you know? He's winnowing barley tonight at the threshing floor, so he's, he's got a lot of work, maybe he's behind schedule. What was that, Joanne? I'm sorry.
I said it's harvest.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. It's harvest time. So I mean, it's sunup to sundown, and maybe a little after. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. You do what has to be done.
That's right. Yeah. And I mean, if you've ever had family members that are farmers or did it yourself growing up, and both mine and Brittany's parents did that with, like, tobacco and stuff. I mean, it's a, it's a completely involved thing until, until the season's over, right?
It's tight.
All-consuming. So, so yeah, so Naomi begins this planning. She begins it with these words, "My daughter, I need to seek some security for you, so that it may be well with you." In a lot of ways, this is Naomi's, you know, showing forth of mutual care and love for Ruth. And it's almost like Naomi's reply to Ruth's, "Where you go, I'll go. Where you stay, I'll stay." Your God will be there on people. And it's like, if we break down what she says, you know, you see in the words, "My daughter." I mean, that's a, that is a term of endearment and affection, right? But there is love within those words, "My daughter." Not "my daughter-in-law," or "you who were once married to my son." My daughter. And "I need," there's a sense of obligation in that, right? "I need to do this for you. And what I need to do for you, I need to seek security for you." And in a way, that is, that is a law of the Israelites, is to, it is a fulfillment of the law that she is pursuing. So there's, there's these three, like, interplaying themes of love, obligation, and the law, the Torah, at play. And so in many ways, we'll use kind of Jesus' language of being fulfillment of the law. Like here, Naomi embodies the law's fulfillment. And the law, even though sometimes some of the, the laws within the Torah are very dense and particular and very overly specific and seem very preventative, ultimately, the law is not trying to make it such that you either have to, you know, do these hard things to make life livable, or you can choose to love others. It's not a zero-sum game. It's like, you have to choose either one or the other. The law, when it is fulfilled, is embodied in gestures of love and loyalty. Jesus says, "The whole law can be summed up in," well, Paul says, "The whole law can be summed up, and you must love your neighbor as yourself," which is Leviticus 19:18. Jesus says, "The greatest commandments are twofold, right? Love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength," as Deuteronomy 6. And then, "You must love your neighbor as yourself," Leviticus 19. And that love that's embodied in the law, when it's fulfilled, is shown in relationships between people. Can strangers even border crosses? And in this way, there is that promise of what she says, that it may be well with you. So Naomi's done a lot of planning, a lot of scheming. She's got a lot of stuff together. But Ruth is the one who has to do it. And as we found in the whole book so far, Ruth being in her position, things like politics, law, and religion are aspects of life that are carried in her body. They're enacted in her body. They're demonstrated in her body. And, you know, it's in her own body, but also in the bodies of the people that she's adopted as her own. We find out that, we found out so far that she belongs, or she's accepted, because of how she behaves, what she does with her body, not because of blood, not because of marriage, not because of status, because she has none of those things. And Naomi's plan reinforces that. You have to go do this thing with this guy at this time, this way. And that's often the case for folks who are in places of oppression. Things that we think of, like politics, law, religion, that are matters of mind and heart, are for people in positions of crisis and oppression, things that are carried in the body. It's not just a matter of intellectual ascent. It is a matter of survival. And that's what we see in the lives of Naomi and Ruth here. There's body politics at play. So any questions there before we keep going? So, so what's Naomi suggesting? Because like, this is an elaborate plan. She's thought it out. She's kind of got a bunch of what-ifs, like, accounted for, it seems. And of course, like we said last week, marriage is the ultimate goal here. But Naomi has to, can only, she can only point Ruth toward that, you know? And Ruth has to use her body to ensure that things move in that direction. And the implication, of course, is that basically she is, in a way, performing the stereotype that we talked about of Moabite women being, you know, seductress or, you know, seductresses and promiscuous. And so it's almost like, part of Naomi's plan is, even though, like, I don't think this about you, because I know you, I need you to kind of, like, perform this in some way. That's kind of what we see there with, like, you know, put on your best clothes, bathe, anoint yourself with oil, and put on your best garments, jewelry, whatever, make yourself desirable. And, you know, whatever the case is, there, it's a delicate act that Ruth has to perform in the presence of someone who has a lot of power and sway over what happens to her. And like we said earlier, it's, this is all about taking care of Ruth. So we mentioned before, levirate marriage, which is a practice in ancient Israel. It's detailed in Deuteronomy 25, where, like, say, my brother and me, like, I'm married, but my brother's not, and I die, my brother would have the obligation in the law to care for my wife, to marry her, and to ensure that progeny, the family's progeny is, it happens, right? And so that's, that's not necessarily what is in view here. It is similar, but it is also, it is something else that's going on. We'll look at the scriptures that talk about what Boaz really is here, because he's a distant relation. He's not a brother. Like, levocratical marriage is more to do with siblings, a male sibling marrying his brother's wife in the event of an untimely death. So there's, there's, for Naomi, what's in view here, there's a far more dangerous concern. And it's, and it's the achieving of security for two of the most vulnerable people in this society, which are widows, and one of them being not just a widow, but an immigrant. And so, you know, this is, this is mostly about them finding a way within the scope of the law and practices of the people of Israel to, to secure their future. So this is what, this is like a literal translation of the Hebrew. A little more literal, says, you know, "Do not let yourself be known to the man until he has finished eating and drinking." This is Naomi's instructions. You may know that certain, the verb "to know" in Hebrew, in its active form, can mean, like, can have sexual meaning, like, to know that person implies sexual intimacy. Here, it's using a more passive form, and so it's really unclear as to whether or not Ruth is, or Naomi is suggesting that Ruth attempts to seduce him, or not really, not necessarily seduce him, but to engage in him in such a way that he would have intercourse with her. It may be more along the lines of, don't like, don't approach him. Don't, don't make yourself known to him, or come close to him until he's kind of eaten and drank, and he's happy, like, fat and happy kind of. We don't really know. But it could be an either-or, but then, but since it's in the passive voice here, instead of a more active form of the verb, it probably is more of the latter, like, wait until the right moment. But who knows? Any questions or stuff? Will we jump into this next section? Comments, questions, anything? Pushback? This text is teasing us so far. Hoping that Boaz is in a good mood after he eats and drinks. All right, who would like to read this next section?
I'll read.
Great.
Okay. "So she went down to the threshing floor and did just as her mother-in-law had instructed her. When Boaz had eaten and drunk, and he was in a contented mood, he went to lie down at the end of the heap of grain. Then she came stealthily and uncovered his feet and lay down. At midnight, the man was startled and turned over, and there, lying at his feet, was a woman. He said, 'Who are you?' And she answered, 'I am Ruth, your servant. Spread your cloak over your servant, for you are next of kin.' He said, 'May you be blessed by the Lord, my daughter. This last instance of your loyalty is better than the first. You have not gone after a young man, whether poor or rich. And now, my daughter, do not be afraid. I will do for you all that you ask, for all the assembly of my people know that you are a worthy woman. But now, though it is true that I am a near kinsman, there is another kinsman more closely related than I. Remain this night, and in the morning, if he can act as next of kin for you, good. Let him do it. If he is not willing to act as next of kin for you, then as the Lord lives, I will act as next of kin for you. Lie down until the morning.'"
So what's going on here? What's popping out? What's, what's going on?
I felt Ruth.
Yeah, I mean, she, she kind of does. She just, she does it, she does it almost to the T, right?
Yeah.
What were you gonna say, Becky?
Oh, I was thinking that while she was laying at his feet, I thought that was a little less aggressive or a little humility that she, you know?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah. Wasn't like she just crawled under the blanket or something.
Well, you know, I didn't know if she, yeah, was respecting, or, you know, if there was her integrity threaded through there or not. I did not know.
Yeah.
I was a bit confused about the part where it says, "Though it is true that I am a near kinsman, there is another kinsman more closely related than I." I don't know, what is he talking about there?
So this, this unnamed kinsman will become a feature in chapter four. But I think Boaz realizes that, though, and we'll talk about kind of his, his role, is what he can do for them. He realizes that he is not the, technically, their next of kin. There is somebody who may have, like, seniority over him, or maybe a slightly closer relation to Naomi or Linalek than, than he is. And so by law, it would be that person's duty to step in and to redeem them, as it were, and cover them. But he said, so he's saying, if that, if for whatever reason, this guy's unavailable, I'm your guy.
But isn't he younger, Patrick? Don't, don't you get the image, he could be a young, be younger than Boaz, and he thought she could possibly go that route?
Possibly, yeah, because I mean, Boaz is, Boaz is a widower, in a sense, he was, when they come back to town, he was burying his wife. And so the idea is that he, he might be a good bit older than Ruth, you know? And so there may be somebody who may be more, more in his prime, as it were.
I couldn't tell if he was trying to get out of it there. I guess that was my question. More is like, is he trying to be noble, or is he trying to get out of it?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's fair. You know, you don't know. I think, you know, judging by his character and his performance so far, I mean, he is, he is a faithful Israelite. And so I think he just has knowledge of, like, I don't want to step outside of my bounds here. Like, I want to, but I can't, just can't break the rules, you know? But, but also, it could be, like, this is, this is a lot of responsibility to take on, too. If I, if I take on her, I'm not just taking on her, I'm taking on Naomi and all that baggage.
It's my drummers. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my.
And what else? Anything other than wondering here?
The way this is written, to me, it has a feeling of negotiations. And I just, it's kind of interesting that, that they're negotiating this.
Yeah, yeah. Intimacy through negotiation, you know? You never thought we'd hear those words together.
A business deal here, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, there's something, it's not just, you know, this isn't just a relationship. It might be based on, you know, mutual affection, or, or just feelings of love and liking someone. This is, this kind of has a whole, like, legal and familial element to it.
Yeah.
Going on here. There is, that's right. Yeah, and it's very layered. And like, there's a lot of that going on. And, yeah, it just, it makes you wonder what, you know, exactly, what is going on here? Like, what is actually, what is actually happening, right? Because like, as, what's that? What was that?
When it says, three times, the phrase is used, you know, "Act as next of kin." What does that encompass? Because I don't know exactly, what all does that mean? I know, I know a little bit about what it means, but three times it says, "Act as next of kin."
Right.
I mean, what all does that involve?
So it's, we're gonna talk about what it means to be a redeeming kinsman. Because that's kind of like what the Hebrew says, a kinsman redeemer, like, whatever that is, right? And like, the best way we can, like, translate that into something that we might understand in our own culture is, like, next of kin, like, if you have, like, if something were to happen to a family member or something like that, who's their next of kin that we contact? Who's gonna take care of all the arrangements and everything to ensure that the families take care of? So that's kind of the role that he would be acting in here. So it's not just, like I said, it's not just a, an intimate, like, love relationship. There's also a sense of obligation through the Jewish law, as well as, as the cultural expectations and stuff. Yeah, so exactly like Cindy says, like, Ruth listens, does them, is instructed, and she puts, again, just like when she went out to the fields, following behind the threshers and the women, like, putting her body on the line, there's a possibility that she could have been raped or abused or killed as a foreigner in a foreign land with no protection or power or any kind of influence whatsoever. And so she moves toward Boaz. And Boaz, of course, as we know, as a person who holds power, he has identity, he has means. And, and a question as old as time, what will this man do to this woman? And that's a question that I think is really important to ask here. And like I said, I guess the question is old as time, as a matter with the culture. What will this man do to someone like her? Because, I mean, there's no secret, you know? Abuse men who just kind of take what they want, as it were. And so the question here is, in antiquity, as well as for now, what will this man do there? I miss, that's a question, I think, that, I mean, and I'm not a woman, so I don't have that experience. But it's, you know, I leave that there to kind of, like, stew. She's taking a huge risk. She only just met this guy. And so that's the risk that she's assuming in her body, again, is she doesn't know exactly how things will play out. They know what they're hoping for, but they really don't know what he's gonna do. They can only hope that, based on how he has presented himself so far, that he will be true to that. So it's a risk. So what exactly transpires? We don't know. Like, we don't really know exactly what happens between the two. And the other question with that is, does it really matter? Does it change the outcome of the story and what we think about these people if they did? You know, consummate their relationship with that? You know, what we see, what we do know, is that Ruth is very strategic in how she comes to Boaz. She waits until he's satisfied, as it were. He's eating, drinking. He's just, he's just so worn out. He just goes and lays on the barley load. So he didn't even go find a bit. He just kind of pass, almost passes out right there in the area where they were having the meal. And then she makes him eat. And so she, she kind of stealthily goes up to him, and she, as Naomi tells him, uncovers his feet and then lays there. And, you know, there is, some consider that to be innuendo. But again, like, whether or not they had intercourse is up for debate. What we do know is that she lies at his feet, which she uncovers, which is What we do know is that she lies at his feet, which she uncovers, which is just like, for her laying at her feet, like Becky said, is a gesture of her lower status, is an act of humility. Suggestive of intimacy that uncovered feet, because it was a euphemism for nakedness. And, you know, in the Bible, to be naked is to be vulnerable, and it's a sense of, can be a marker for shame, but it is also a sense of, that's something, not something that you want to do to someone is uncovered. And so whatever transpires, it is intimate, but not necessarily sexual. I don't know. What we do know is that when Ruth goes over there, she uncovers his feet. Maybe his feet get cold, maybe something else happens, whatever happens, he's startled awake. And he's like, oh my God, like there's a woman lying here in my bed. And it's, it comes as a surprise, and he's kind of like, I just kind of imagine him as waking up and just kind of babbling, like stumbling all over himself, doesn't know what to do, like this woman is uncovering my feet, she's laying there. What does she want, you know, for me? I don't know what I'm supposed to do. But he, he kind of gathers himself, and she, she asks, you know, like to cover me with your wings. So that's kind of like the harkening back to the blessing that he spoke over her in chapter two, where he says, "May the Lord, you know, may you find refuge in the Lord's wing and pull you in and cover you." She asked that of him. Will you do that? Will you be that cover for me? And so I just want to pause here to kind of, because the intimacy is a question that anytime I've ever read this book, anytime I've ever studied anything about it, this seems to be like a big deal. It's like, what happens in this strange nocturnal encounter between Ruth and Boaz? And I think that instead of just like asking questions, you know, like, do they have sex or not? Does it matter? Like, there's like better questions that we can ask. Those questions have been asked repeatedly in the history of biblical interpretation. Did they consummate their relationship? Well, yeah, that's not, I don't think that's the best question we could ask. I think some good questions to ask would be, would the reputation of both Ruth and Boaz suffer if it seemed to others the next day or whatever that they had consummated their relationship that night? You know, what would be, what would happen to them if that were to have happened and it come out? You know, or would it be something that didn't tarnish Boaz's reputation, because he is who he is? But it would be one where Ruth ends up suffering more because of her lower status and her wobba here. Oh yeah, she's exactly who we thought she was. And then the question of why is a woman's purity more a topic for discussion than a man's here? Right? Why is it necessary that she perform this, do that, act this way, sneak away before morning more than it is as far as what Boaz ends up doing? And a question of why, considering the history of interpretation in the midst of matters concerning borders, belongings, politics, religion, a lot of people get so enamored of issues of sex and purity. I don't know. I'm just asking the question, because it's something that just kind of greats on me a little bit. Do you have any thoughts or anything on that? I mean, it's okay to be candid here about that.
It just doesn't seem like much has changed in the last thousands and thousands of years.
That's so true, yeah, isn't it so true? And it really, there's a sense that it's like, wow, okay, like, they may not be thinking about these, they may not be living and experiencing these things exactly in the same way and thinking about them in the same way that we do today. And yet, here it is. And so it's almost like the Bible asks us to think about these things. In the midst of the good things that are happening between Ruth and Boaz, there's also this great potential and risk here that is incurred by Ruth that I think, I think is worth talking about and exploring and thinking about. You know, like Naomi says, "He shall tell you what you should do." And it's almost like she, you know, Naomi certainly appears to leave it open that the possibility that Boaz will ask Ruth to lie with him. But it seems like she's counting on him to kind of still act virtuously as he has so far. That he's, because he's shown himself so far to be a faithful Israelite, maybe he'll find a way to do social and I guess matrimonial justice to someone who is related to him by marriage. And so I think even though the hope's there, the hope is there, the, I think the probability might be there. There's still these things in the background that could be a big, big deal. So Boaz here acts as kind of a kinsman redeemer, and Ruth asks him to spread your wing over me. "May you spread your wing over your servant, for you are a redeeming kinsman." Hebrew like knaf is the word there. It can mean wing, it could mean like garment too, like throw the, spread the corner of your garment over me like, you know, take me to yourself. And so Boaz acts here, maybe not surprisingly to us, but maybe surprisingly to Ruth and to Naomi eventually. He's benevolent, he's kind, and he serves as this kind of refuge for Ruth and also Naomi. And yet, I think it's important to hold that intention with, his kindness would be unknown were it not for Ruth and Naomi's insistence. Their scheming, their insistence that they have a right not only to survive, but to thrive. And that being particularly true for Ruth. I think it's both those things at the same time held attention. It's that Boaz is proving himself to be a faithful Israelite. And it's, it is so because Ruth and Naomi insist, are insisting here that I'm not just a widow to be cast aside. I'm not just an immigrant to be cast aside. I have a place among God's people. And again, like, we don't know what happened between them, not because that detail's unimportant, but rather, I think what happens here is it opens up a deeper understanding of what Boaz does next. Because it wasn't just about, did they get intimate with each other? It's about, is Boaz gonna be the person that we all need him to be? And from this point forward in the narrative, he functions not simply as one who wants to do right by Ruth, but he actually becomes somebody who wants Ruth. Like, after this moment, he actually desires her. He's very interested and invested in her future, not just doing right by the law, but doing right for her in his own view. So Ruth asks Boaz to be her redeemer. What does that mean? So it's not the same, it's related to levity marriages that we talked about earlier, but being a kinsman redeemer, and she noticed that it's an indefinite article there. He's not V, he is A. So there is the possibility here that there's somebody who's more suited for this role, somebody else who's a relative, and Boaz alludes to that. It means that Boaz is particularly positioned to act on behalf of a relative who is in trouble, danger, or need. So particular attention in these kinds of kinsman redeemer moments is, in the Torah, it's given particularly with regard to property and personhood. So if somebody happened to become indentured or enslaved to another person, if you had a next of kin who was able to vouch for you and to kind of pull you out of that servitude and kind of restore your dignity, that was your obligation under the law to do that. And so here, he's kind of acting in some way to redeem whatever trouble and need that they find themselves in. So this is what they're talking about here, that Boaz, of course, is happy to do, but he also realizes he may not, he doesn't think he's the closest kin, kinsperson to them to do that. He don't want to step outside of his boundaries. So here's, here's the kind of, one of the kinsman redeemer texts here. It's from Leviticus. We've been, you notice how much we've quoted Leviticus here? You never thought in all your life you'd have so many quotes from Leviticus that are relevant to what you're talking about. But here we go. "If resident aliens among you prosper," or you say, "if immigrants," it's another way of translating it, "strangers among you prosper, and if any of your kin fall into difficulty with one of them and sell themselves to a stranger or alien or to a branch of that alien's family, after they have sold themselves, they shall have the right of redemption. One of their brothers may redeem them, or their uncle or their uncle's son may redeem them, or any one of their family who is left of their own flesh may redeem them. Or if they prosper, they may redeem themselves." This text goes on and on and on. It basically says, you know, this is God's way of helping them be accountable to one another, not to lose any of who they are, and anyone, any of their relatives, any of their kind, right? Because for ancient Israel, their future was determined by progeny, right? God speaks to Abraham, "From your seed I will create a great people, and through them the whole world will be blessed." It is through progeny, it is through having children and passing on that DNA, a spiritual and physical DNA that the people of Israel endure. And so it's so important that none be lost, right? And so this is a way that that was kind of a safeguard against that. Any thoughts or questions or other stuff before we jump into this last section here? Well, would someone like to bring us home here with this last section?
I'll read it.
Great, thanks Becky.
"So she lay at his feet until morning, but got up before one person could recognize another. For he said, 'It must not be known that the woman came to the threshing floor.' Then he said, 'Bring the cloak you were wearing and hold it out.' So she held it, and he measured out six measures of barley and put it on her back. Then he went into the city. She came to her mother-in-law, who said, 'How did things go with you, my daughter?' Then she told her all the man, all that the man had done for her, saying, 'He gave me these six measures of barley, for he said, 'Do not go back to your mother-in-law empty-handed.'" She replied, "Wait, my daughter, until you learn how the matter turns out, for the man will not rest, but will settle the matter today."
All right, what do you guys see here? What's going on?
Well, I'm just glad she didn't go home empty-handed, or Naomi may have thought that she may have been rejected. Possibly.
Looking good.
Yeah. I think it was the answer, Naomi was waiting for.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or expecting.
Or hoping. I mean, you know, like we said, she's woken up, so I think she's full of hope.
Yeah. Yeah. What else? Boaz makes sure that things are taken care of, and apparently Naomi gets this sense that, okay, based on his actions, he ain't letting this, you know, he's not gonna let this, there be any delay in this. He's gonna get this taken care of today. It's how I feel. He's, he's not gonna dilly-dally, right? So maybe she senses in his actions something of desire.
Not sure what Ruth was, I mean, I think we know what Ruth was expecting or what Naomi had told her to do. But after Boaz said what he did, you know, you have to step back and think, you know? Is this what was supposed to happen?
Right, yeah, right, yeah. I don't know. Yeah, 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 that's absolutely right. I think it's, there's always, there's still very much a surprise there. Boaz always seems to like outperform our best expectations of him. And there's surprise on the, there's surprise on both ends of that. If he, if he did really bad by her, or if he does like, kind of, you know, just, it just kind of outshines expectations here. Boaz's chief concern, the results are in here, right? Boaz's chief concern is Ruth's well-being and reputation. In his case, he wants to make sure that she gets out of the house before people know that she spent the night. And there's practical and there's symbolic reasons for her to do that. It's, you know, he wants her to spend the night, if she were to, you know, walk across town or somewhere by herself at night, she could, I mean, she could kill, she could get mugged, you know, whatever. And so part of it's safety, part of it too is just ensuring that, you know, there's nothing that could happen to her. But then making sure she's awoken before, kind of as dawn is breaking, before other people get up is, you know, it's almost like saving her from a situation where she might be seen kind of walking away from having slept in the same place with Boaz and didn't want her to be perceived as like a prostitute or worse. And it says, as an act of, said for her, loving kindness and ensuring that everything's taken care of, so that there's not even a perception of her as being less than, than a person of integrity and worth. And so just again, what did Ruth and Boaz do? Doesn't matter? I don't, you know, I don't think it does. It doesn't change the outcome of Boaz desiring her in the end. Both of them have been married before. There's nothing taboo or other going on there. There's cultural nuances, there's suggestive things that are, there are things that are suggested implied, and there may be innuendo that's just there, playing the words and the text and the way that they're conveyed. But these people have been around the block before. They're not new to this. They, you know, there's other things at play. And I think, like we were talking earlier, this thing is very layered. It's not just about physical intimacy and like love shared, like we sense love between ourselves and our spouses or children or brothers and sisters and parents and stuff, people we love, friends. There's other cultural and religious things at play here that make this very layered. Yes, yes.
In the back of my mind, this keeps coming up. Isn't there something about the threshing floor? Aren't women supposed to be there? Are men threshing grain naked?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's kind of part of the implication there as well, is that, you know, kind of that whole play on like uncovering his feet kind of thing. There's a sense that, yeah, there's a sense that, I mean, some of these guys, yeah, when they're working, I mean, you know, it's hot, it's sweaty and stuff. I mean, what's to say they're just in a loincloth or less, you know? And it's, some of that, some of that work was done naked, right? And, right, and so that, thanks for, I didn't even think to mention that. That's a great, that's a really great point. And so there is kind of like, there is like temptation of bounds, I guess, right? And there's a sense that she could have stumbled into something that would have been very, very inappropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so just her physical, the physical place, it goes, plays also into the risks that she undertakes as well. Uh huh, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and so I find it ironic too, and I just something that, that's just like, reflecting on this, Ruth seems like so composed. Like, she just goes in there, she does her thing, she performs her task of the T. When she startles him awake, she kind of like, almost like she's rehearsed what she wants to say to him. And she just nails it. And she's the one who in this undertakes the risk. She's the one who has everything to fear, but she's the one who also is the one who's in control of herself. Where Boaz, like, he startles himself awake, he's like a bumbling idiot, and then he kind of composes himself, and he doesn't know what to do. He's like, oh my God, a woman like laying on my feet, she's uncovering my feet, what's going on? And, and, and he's the most like, he's the most like socially, economically, religiously, culturally secure person in this whole story. It's just ironic, I think, how it's, how this happens, how this plays out, where it's Ruth who's the one who seems to be in control and composed, and Boaz of all people is not at all. But he kind of gets it, he pulls it together.
Who is she doing this for? Herself or for Naomi?
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah, motives play, yeah. Motives are so important. And we've seen how, you know, so far Ruth has shown this kind of, like, it was nothing that was obligated of her, this kind of loyalty to Naomi. She had no reason to stick with her. And yes, she does, right? And now Naomi's finally come around to where she's found something that she can do to show her love and affection for Ruth. And it seems like she's trying to do that. That's why I say like Naomi's sure that her plans are working, and perhaps God is in the midst of them and kind of assuring that, you know, now Boaz is gonna make sure that she, that this good future comes to pass. Like, he's gonna get it settled today. He's not waiting. He's gonna make sure, he's gonna find out how he fits into this puzzle too, today. That's, that's gonna be what chapter four kind of brings in, but, and this is, I think, what we see a lot of here. We've talked about the command, the repeated commands of caring for the orphan, the widow, and the immigrant that were repeated throughout the Old Testament. And Jesus is particular, can say, care too for those on the margins. But here it is. "You shall not hate in your heart any one of your kin; you shall reproach your neighbor or you yourself. You shall not take vengeance or bear grudge against any of your people, but you shall love your neighbor as yourself. I am the Lord." This is 18 there, that second sentence. That is what Jesus quotes, so Paul quotes as a summation of the whole law. And here we see Boaz living that, Ruth putting it to the test again, insisting that there is belonging in the people of God. This is something else we need to talk about here. And this is what I'm calling the slow fade of Ruth, because Ruth doesn't say much towards the end of this. She kind of does her thing. When she leaves Boaz, she just doesn't, she talks about, hey, he gave me these six shares and you shouldn't come at the end. But then Ruth's. She talks about, hey, um, he gave me these six shares and you shouldn't come at the end. But then Ruth's, Ruth's pretty much gone now. It's kind of a leading into next week. She's, her prominence in the narrative becomes less and less. Why is that? We don't know. We can only speculate. Maybe the story is shifting more towards a patriarchal lineage. It could be that the story becomes ultimately about how Boaz responds to this need. And so it's looking at, is he a faithful Israelite? It could be about, again, like a lineage of, you know, King David comes into view in chapter four. It could be about ultimately about how Naomi is redeemed in this. Whatever the case, Ruth fades out of the story. So she's mentioned, but not an active participant in what plays out in the rest of the book. And it's peculiar, we have to think about how the book was composed, when it was composed, all those things we did in the first session to, to maybe get some clues about that. But I don't think it's because of any anxiety in Ruth's part about her future. As to why she kind of fades out of the story. Perhaps it's anxiety held, like I said, in the collective identity and memory of Israel. The people who are writing this, taking this story from an oral form to a written form, there's anxiety that a Moabite is playing this such a key role in holding the image of God. And, uh, I think I'm just saying, guys. Can you wave? Say hey. Uh, sorry about that. I couldn't. But, but talking about it is anxiety that's held in, in, in the people of Israel about the idea that, you know, this is how the story ends. And we gotta reckon with the fact that a Moabite, our greatest king, our greatest, one of our most revered, but also very broken and human people in King David, Moabite heritage is, and so we have to reckon with that. And so maybe Ruth fades from the story in that regard to center more Boaz as that person. So. And, and so again, we can say it may be like from this point forward, it may betray an unspoken awareness of the fact that, that of her bodily presence in Israel. She is the unspoken that everyone knows about. She is the Moabite who birthed the one who, the, the lineage of King David, right? So there's something that she's a Moabite woman immigrant in whom is seen in this story most clearly, the image of God, the insistence that Israel be faithful. And she comes seeking cover from a people not her own, bringing them into the, the, the shelter of her kindness while trusting that they'll do the same to her. And, and that in a sense, as we've talked about every week, is scandalous. That it is the foreigner, the immigrant, the, uh, the one who is, who does not technically belong is the one through whom we see the image of God. Looks clearly in calling the people of Israel to faith, to be faithful to their covenant. I just felt like that needed to be, like, that was kind of an elephant in the room that we're really gonna lean into next week. But Ruth, Ruth kind of fades out of her own story in a sense. What are y'all's thoughts on that? How does that make you feel? I never thought about that until, until preparing for tonight.
Well, it, it seems to me like, you know, we have this story and we've almost come to the end of it. And, and, but it is portrayed as though someone is telling a story, but that's the end of it. And here's the lesson coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it kind of seems it's kind of this, um, yeah, it, it, it almost, it's weird. It's, it's an interesting ending to a book. It shifts towards like a guy, I said, that lineage of King David. It's like, and, and several books in the Bible end weird like that. The book of Jonah ends weird. We think that maybe the book of Jonah that we have is not the whole book of Jonah, because it just kind of ends with this kind of thing where God's like, Jonah's so mad that, that God saved people that he wanted to die. And God's like, can I do what I want to do? And then it's like the book ends. And it's just, there's several books that end, end with this kind of weird, either weird darkness about them, or they just seem like they take a shift towards moral imperative or, uh, and this is the, this is how such and such came to be.
God is God.
Right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Good luck. Good luck with that. Yeah. So any, any final thoughts? I mean, take, how about we do takeaways, but just before that we do takeaways, any final thoughts, just in thinking about everything tonight?
Just thinking that other thing that before it fade, she was so important in the lineage of Jesus and, and when King David. She was so important, they couldn't ignore her.
That's right.
Yeah. And chances are, as we know, men wrote this, women didn't write this.
Right.
And so if you, if you trace it back, Bruce is gonna come out and it's like, oh, well, we better put her in here somewhere.
Right.
Black hole at the beginning of this, that we go acknowledge Ruth.
Well, and the story, the story has such a, like we said in the first session, it has a, such a big significance in Israel's religious liturgical life. That is, she couldn't be ignored. The story couldn't be ignored. Absolutely right. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, she's hitting the screen time, so we'll.
Yeah, cause Matthew's gospel actually says, you know, uh, Boaz was the father of Obed, whose mother was Ruth. So it's like, you can't leave that out. Yeah. What are y'all taking away from tonight?
Well, this story's placed very early in, in the whole story, in the, in the whole testament. And Israel has a very definite idea, kind of definite, about who they are and how they are to be and how pure they're to be. And yet, here's somebody that is an enemy, not an Israelite, very foreign, and God's using them? You know, this has to be quite shocking.
Right. Yeah. And it's, and, and it's, and it's interesting because it's not, it's not the first time. Cause I was at, uh, Balam and Belloc, like they try to, tries to get him to curse Israel, but he won't do it because he feels that the Lord's called him to do something different. And then there's this whole business of Melchizedek. And he shows up and goes away and that's, and that shows up again in the book of Hebrews, they reference that. And yeah, but, and, and it's, yeah, and it's so scandalous. Yeah. This is such a major point. Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly, what it makes me think of is, um, so I'm currently in a Jewish biblical literature class at school. And we, um, talked about like when God made the covenant with Abraham, the covenant was through like, um, the circumcision of the sons. And they talked a lot about what does that mean for the women? Like then is the covenant only with the sons or like with the men of Israel? Or like, like how are women included in that? And so it's like, since Ruth is a woman, like, does that mean that she's automatically a part of the covenant or automatically not a part of it? And so I just think that that's really interesting that like he's bringing in a foreigner, but it's a foreign woman. So it doesn't matter that she's circumcised or not, because that's, like that's not part of the covenant, the women specifically.
Also, that's an interesting little thing there, maybe there. I mean, because yeah, it's, um, if it were a male, there'd be a lot more kind of, that is kind of ritualistic, well, we gotta give you this little snip to make it official, right? But it's not, that's not like a, yeah, that would not have been a prerequisite for her. What else? I, I, yeah, I don't think about that. That's good.
I, I think that for me, it's Ruth had a, a plan. It was Naomi's plan. But sometimes our best laid plans don't always turn out.
That's very true. Yeah.
There's a 2020, yeah.
Yeah.
And for this story to start out in such a bad place, it's like the, it's this interesting how the plans, the best laid plans, it's like God one-ups them in a sense, in, in the background. They end up being better than they think they can actually be based on their circumstances and their station of life.
Right.
Anything else? Couple of things here, just, um, faith is embodied, it's inseparable from the rest of our life. We can't parcel out our faith life from the rest of who we are and what we do. So faith is embodied, what we do. And so as you said, like what we do with our bodies matters, not just in relation to ourselves, but in relation to other people. So that's like going back to that Leviticus thing and then Jesus quoting it in Mark's gospel, he quotes it in all gospels, but in Mark's gospel there. And I think that God's presence in this story is reinforced again, most clearly in the experience of border crossers. And how their existence is scandalous to the people who receive them. And just, and, and we see that in Ruth, just in the, and again, and what she assumes again in her body, what she has to do, perform in order to belong. And I think that God is particularly with her and the people who are, who are the faithful ones in the story continue to recognize that. Indirectly, indirectly. And I think it's critical as followers of Jesus for us to cultivate a glow, a growing awareness of those in our midst, whose stories are suppressed, silenced or ignored. Thinking about that last point about how Ruth fades from the story. We know it ends well for her, but we don't know that from her. And so I wonder, yeah, as we're looking around in the world today, and we see people who are suffering and we hear about things that are happening in the world that cause doing violence to people, you know, it's, whose stories are, are we missing? Whose stories are we not hearing? Which ones are suppressed, silenced or ignored? And how do we manifest ways to listen? That's one, and I think that's a powerful thing that this whole book is, is teaching us, is teasing out in a way, calling us to listen to those, those stories that aren't the ones at the center. Any final things tonight? Next week, we're gonna be in chapter four. And then we're gonna have our last session, where we're gonna be asking the question of how is this a story for our time? And so it'll be a lot of sense of how do we draw conclusions in the book? How do we interpret this book for our time? Next week, we're talking about the future, the future that all of these, this scheming and working that's been going on in these last chapters by the characters and by God and in the background in a sense. It's a future, but whose future is it? And that's what we'll be looking at it because Naomi and Boaz are very centered in this story, especially Boaz, but not Ruth. So. Would anyone like to close us in prayer?
I will.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Let's pray. Gracious and holy God, we give you thanks that we can read and then we can get into the story. The stories that you have given us, the stories that, that we live our lives, that we know that you're in, that your presence is there. For we pray that you will continue to show us and to help us to grow in your spirit, help us to grow in our faith as we, as we read the word of God for us, the people of God. Lord, that, that we will continue to grow where we are and we will take another step forward in, in your presence. Go with us through this time of Lent. Go with us and, and, and help us to be the people that you have called each one of us to be. In Jesus' precious and holy name we pray. Amen.